Welcome to the hybrid public hearing for State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, State Road 366 Pensacola Street, Project Development and Environment Study. If you do not hear audio at this time, please check your computer speaker settings. If you are experienced technical difficulties, please contact technical support at jennifer.brownfield@attkinsrealist.com. In the event of technical difficulties during the open house or the public hearing, please stay online while we work to resolve the issue. Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to the public hearing for State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, State Road 366 Pensacola Street PDNE Study. My name is Taylor Sellers. I am the District 3 Project Manager for this project and will be monitoring tonight's public hearing. This public hearing is relative to the State Financial Project Identification Number 219-820-222-01, Federal Aid Identification Number D322-01-B, and the Efficient Transportation Decision Making Identification Number 14434. On behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation, we would like to thank you for the interest in this study. I am being supported by representatives from FDOT District 3 and the consultancy and will be available for questions both in person and online. We are hosting the public hearing simultaneously in person at the Tallahassee State College in Tallahassee, Florida, and virtually through GoToWebinar. I would also like to take a moment and thank any elected officials who are in attendance for tonight's public hearing. We appreciate your interest and involvement in this project. We will now turn our attention to the narrative public hearing presentation.
Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, State Road 366 Pensacola Street, Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study. Financial Project Identification Number 219-820-222-01, Federal Aid Project Identification Number D322-010-B, and Efficient Transportation Decision Making, or ETDM, number 14434. In addition to the PDNE staff here tonight, representatives from the District Right-of-Way Department are here and will be available after the public hearing if you have questions regarding right-of-way acquisition on this project. A transcript is being made of all oral proceedings and will be part of the public record for this project. Before we begin the presentation, I will share a few details to help you participate in this public hearing through GoToWebinar. On your computer or device screen, you should see an information window that looks like the one shown on the right side. To listen to the public hearing, your computer or device speakers are selected by default. If you prefer to listen by phone, select Phone Call in the Control Panel and dial in using the information provided. All virtual attendees will be placed in Listen Only Mode for the duration of the public hearing. At a later date, we will provide responses to written comments that were submitted during online registration and those who submitted comments at the in-person venue. The comment period begins as soon as the presentation has ended. Verbal comments from in-person attendees will be addressed first. Verbal comments from virtual attendees will be addressed second. Providing verbal comments using GoToWebinar is simple. First, you must request to speak when registering to attend. During the comment period, the organizer will call your name that you provided during registration and unmute you. When the microphone icon is green, you are ready to make your comment. If the microphone icon stays orange, you will need to click the microphone icon once and it will notify you that you are unmuted and then you can provide your comment. You will not be on camera at any time during the formal presentation or while providing public comments. In-person participants will be called upon to speak first, followed by the virtual online speakers who wish to speak. If you dialed into the public hearing by telephone, your phone was automatically placed in Listen Only Mode and will remain in Listen Only Mode throughout the public hearing. Those attending in person and virtually may make a public comment when called upon. A recording of the webinar will be available on the project website three days after the public hearing. You can also call or email the FDOT Project Manager after the public hearing to request additional information. All comments must be submitted or postmarked by Friday, November 22, 2024, to become part of the official public hearing record. Prior to the public hearing, draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review at Tallahassee State College Library since October 15, 2024, and will continue to be available at this location through November 22, 2024. The Tallahassee State College Library is located at 444 Apple Yard Drive in Tallahassee, Florida. The draft engineering and environmental documents were also made available at the project website, and will continue to be made available at the project website after this hearing. You may also view project documents tonight at the in-person public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvements, the conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential benefits and disadvantages pertaining to social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. This study satisfies the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, and other policies, regulations, and procedures. There are three primary components to tonight's public hearing. First, the open house, which occurred prior to this presentation, where you were invited to view the project displays, speak with the project team, and provide comments in writing or to the court reporter. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project's purpose and need, study alternatives, potential impacts, both beneficial and adverse, and proposed methods to mitigate any adverse project impacts. And third, a formal comment period following this presentation, where you will have the opportunity to provide verbal comments, or, for those that are in the in-person location, may provide comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. The environmental study has been conducted by FDOT District 3 in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws and pursuant to 23 U.S. Code 327 and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding between FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, signed on May 26, 2022. The FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. This public hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat and the Florida Administrative Register and was noticed consistent with the federal and state requirements shown on this slide. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the FDOT District 3 office or the Tallahassee office. This contact information is displayed on the screen, at the sign-in table at this public hearing, and in the handout. FDOT is conducting a PDNE study for this project. The PDNE process is used to evaluate potential impacts to determine an alternative utilizing continuous community outreach to ensure all interested parties have meaningful participation in the process. Public input and information received at the public hearing will be taken into consideration when preparing the final documents for this study. A virtual project update was held previously on January 30, 2024. Following tonight's public hearing, FDOT will finalize the study documents and conclude the study in the spring of 2025. The study limits extend along State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, State Road 366 Pensacola Street, from State Road 263 Capital Circle Southwest to Apple Yard Drive in Leon County, approximately one mile in length. State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, State Road 366 Pensacola Street is designated as an emergency evacuation route by the Florida Division of Emergency Management. The project proposes to address safety issues, improve capacity, and provide continuous bicycle and pedestrian facilities throughout the corridor. Funding for this PDNE study and future phases of the project are listed in the Capital Region Transportation Planning Agency, or CRTPA's 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan as a Tier 2 project with funding in the years 2026 to 2030. This PDNE study is identified in the CRTPA Fiscal Year 2022-2023 to Fiscal Year 2026-2027 Transportation Improvement Program with funding program for 2023. The project is also ranked #8 on the CRTPA Roadway Project Priority List and the current FDOT State Transportation Improvement Program for PDNE with funding in 2024. The purpose of this project is to accommodate future vehicular capacity and address safety issues on State Road 20, State Road 366 Pensacola Street, from State Road 263 Capital Circle Southwest to Apple Yard Drive. The project is needed to evaluate traffic congestion, safety concerns, and continuous bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The intersections at Capital Circle Southwest, the driveway at Refreshment Services Pepsi, and Century Park Drive, along with the segment from Capital Circle Southwest to State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, are projected to operate at a failing level of service in the year 2050 if no capacity improvements are constructed. From a safety perspective, the segment between Bluntstown Highway and Progress Drive and all signalized intersections within the study area have a crash rate higher than the statewide averages for similar facilities. Although pedestrian and bicycle facilities exist today along the corridor, there are gaps along the full length of the corridor. State Road 20, State Road 366 is an east-west facility in Leon County and varies between two to four lanes and includes a 288-foot bridge, Bridge #550001, which crosses two railroad tracks in Munson Slough. State Road 20, State Road 366 is functionally classified as an urban minor arterial, Access Classification 6, and as C3C suburban commercial for the entirety of the corridor from Capital Circle Southwest to Apple Yard Drive. Typical land uses include commercial, institutional, vacant, resource protection, and governmental land uses. From State Road 263 Capital Circle Southwest, traveling east along the corridor, there are various automotive shops and other businesses, followed by a wooded section along both sides of the corridor, which includes the railroad overpass until you reach Century Park Drive. Beginning just east of Century Park Drive, until the intersection of Apple Yard Drive at the end of the project lies Tallahassee State College, Refreshment Services Pepsi, and Tallahassee Fire Station #4 and Training Division. The existing State Road 20, State Road 366 corridor consists of three typical sections. First, State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, from State Road 263 Capital Circle Southwest to State Road 366 Pensacola Street, is a four-lane divided urban roadway that includes two 11-foot travel lanes in each direction that are divided by 21.5-foot grass median, a curb and gutter drainage system, seven-foot buffered bike lanes, and five-foot sidewalks in both directions. The second typical section is for State Road 366 Pensacola Street, from State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway to Apple Yard Drive. It includes a two-lane urban roadway that includes two 13-foot travel lanes in each direction that are separated by a 15-foot bidirectional turn lane, five-foot shoulders, and an eight-foot sidewalk along the westbound lane that is separated from the roadway shoulder by a 10-foot grass median. The third typical section is for Bridge #55001, which is an urban two-lane roadway that includes 12-foot lanes in each direction, two-foot shoulders, and a three-foot 1-inch safety curb. State Road 20, State Road 366 improvements include widening to four lanes, bridge replacement, intersection and drainage improvements, safer access to existing side streets and driveways, and the addition of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The proposed typical section for State Road 366 Pensacola Street from Bluntstown Highway to Century Park Drive excluding the bridge consists of a four-lane divided urban roadway including two 11-foot lanes in each direction divided by 22-foot raised median. Drainage will be handled with a closed drainage system utilizing inlets and stormwater pipes, collected through curb and gutter. There is a seven-foot buffered bike lane and a 12-foot shared-use path in both directions. The proposed typical section will fit within the existing right-of-way. In addition, the proposed improvements include changing the current access management classification from Class 6 to Class 5. The proposed typical section for State Road 366 Pensacola Street from Century Park Drive to Apple Yard Drive consists of a four-lane urban section with a striped median where needed. The typical section consists of two 11-foot lanes in each direction with a curb and gutter. Drainage will be handled with a closed drainage system utilizing inlets and stormwater pipes. There is a seven-foot buffered bike lane and a 12-foot shared-use path in both directions. The proposed typical section will fit within the existing right-of-way. The proposed typical section for Bridge #55001 consists of two 11-foot lanes in each direction divided by 22-foot raised concrete median. In both directions, an eight-foot 4-inch shoulder would accommodate bicyclists, while a 12-foot shared-use path is provided with concrete walls on both sides. Since the bridge crosses over the Florida Gulf and Atlantic Railroad in Munson Slough, fencing will be provided on the outside wall of the shared-use path. The proposed typical section will fit within the existing right-of-way. To satisfy the purpose and need identified for the project, the preferred alternative includes the following primary improvements: alleviate traffic congestion by widening State Road 366 Pensacola Street to four lanes to provide additional capacity for daily and evacuation traffic; improve safety conditions by adding turn lanes to State Road 263 Capital Circle Southwest, NINA Road, and Apple Yard Drive; and enhance mobility by providing dedicated bicycle and pedestrian facilities. An important element of this PDNE study was to evaluate the potential project impacts and benefits. A wide range of environmental effects were evaluated, including various social, cultural, natural, and physical features, and were documented in the environmental document. Engineering and traffic factors were also considered. Impacts to resources are further discussed for the preferred alternative on the following slides. A comparison of the impacts for the preferred alternative are provided in project documents. The total construction cost of the preferred alternative is approximately $40.8 million. Based on the project evaluation, the FDOT has determined there are no adverse or disproportionate impacts to low-income, minority, or protected population groups by the proposed improvements. The preferred alternative will take place primarily within the existing right-of-way, with the exception of 10 parcels. The project may require partial acquisitions from parcels along NINA Road and at the intersection with Apple Yard Drive to accommodate the addition of turn lanes onto State Road 20, State Road 366. The findings are documented in the Preliminary Engineering Report, available here tonight and online. Section 106 of the Natural Historic Preservation Act requires agencies to consider the effects of their actions on cultural resources. One historic site eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, the Pensacola and Georgia Railroad, was identified within the study area, but there are no adverse effects to this resource or other cultural resources as a result of the project's improvements. Concurrence from the State Historic Preservation Officer on the cultural resource findings was received in June of 2024. Although there are wetlands, other surface waters, and floodplains present within the study area, the proposed improvements are not anticipated to have any impacts to these resources. Within the study area, 0.59 acres of wetlands and 0.92 acres of other surface waters were identified. However, there are no significant waters or protection areas within the study area. The project was evaluated for potential federal and state threatened and endangered species. The project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, the eastern indigo snake. No adverse effect is anticipated by the project on the gopher tortoise and plant species, ashes magnolia, Alabama spiny pod, baltzell sedge, Florida flame azalea, and zigzag silk grass. No impacts are expected to affect the bald eagle and no effect is anticipated on the other 20 species which may occur within the project area. There are no impacts anticipated to essential fish habitat. In coordination with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, on the study's natural resources did occur in July of 2024. Within the project limits, a total of 10 sites were identified as having the potential for contamination. The potential contamination risk levels of the 10 sites include one having a high risk, five having a medium risk, and four having a low risk. No additional testing is recommended for sites rated low. During the design phase, medium and high-rated sites will be further evaluated. The preferred alternative is expected to have no significant contamination impacts. Nine noise receptors were used to evaluate noise levels at noise-sensitive sites, of which no substantial noise increases were identified. The preferred alternative will not approach or exceed the noise abatement criteria. Therefore, noise abatement measures are not recommended for further consideration in the project's design phase. In addition, utility owners were contacted and provided initial concept plans in order to identify their utility facilities within the project limits and associated relocation costs. Of the utility owner responses received, a medium level of impacts was determined and utility relocations are anticipated with the preferred alternative. The no-build, or do-nothing, alternative is also considered a viable alternative and will remain so for the duration of the PDNE study. Under this alternative, no improvements, except routine maintenance, would be made to State Road 20, State Road 366 within the project limits. Thank you. That concludes the formal presentation. We will now begin the public comment period of the public hearing. The next step is to incorporate input from this public hearing into our decision-making process. Persons wishing to make a statement regarding this project will now have an opportunity to do so. There are multiple ways to provide your comments: written, in person using the court reporter, or verbally. If you do not wish to speak at the microphone, you may provide your comments in writing. Every comment method carries equal weight.
At this time, we do not have anyone registered to speak. If you would like to speak and have not yet completed and turned in a speaker card, please raise your hand. Is there anyone in person who would like to make a statement that needs a speaker card? Please come up and state your name and address. This concludes the in-person comments. At this time, we are going to turn it over to our online moderator, Jennifer Brownfield, who will now call upon our online participants who requested to speak at registration or have used the Raise Your Hand icon to indicate they would like to speak.
Thank you, Taylor. For those of you wishing to offer public comments virtually, I will call your name and then unmute you. Please make sure to also unmute your microphone on your end using the GoToWebinar Control Panel, as shown on this slide. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. Again, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And before you speak, make sure you are not self-muted, which you can undo by clicking the microphone icon in the Control Panel. If you did not ask to speak when you registered for the hearing, but you would like to do so now, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. And I will call on you once we have heard from those who have previously registered to speak. First person requesting to make a public statement tonight is Charles Livingston Jr. It does not appear that Charles Livingston Jr. is online tonight, but if you are online, registered under another person's name, please click the Raise Your Hand button and I'll unmute you. Okay, I do not see any raised hands. If anybody else would like to make a public comment tonight who's registered online, please use the Raise Your Hand button now and I'll unmute you. Okay, I have two raised hands. First off, I'm going to select Susan Poplin. Susan, please, I'm unmuting you now, so please unmute yourself as well.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for the presentation on the Pensacola Street improvements. I'm Susan Poplin. My address is 3523 Old St. Augustine, and I am not representing any organization tonight. So I just had a comment and a question. I think the multi-use trails, and I think I heard 12 feet, 10 or 12 feet for the multi-use trails, and including and extending over the bridge, which I think is a great idea and I hope that that will be retained through the final PDNE. And also, I guess, a question on the timing of the improvements. I think I heard you say it's on the CRTPA program as Project #8 or eighth in line for funding. So what would the timing be on the improvements for this particular project?
Thank you, Susan. We will have project staff reach out to you in the email address that you registered with after the meeting tonight, and they'll answer all your questions.
Thank you. That concludes my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kent Wimmer. I'm going to unmute you now. Please unmute yourself and speak for three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kent Wimmer. I live at 1294 Avondale Way in Tallahassee. I want to commend District 3 for including the bike pit facilities along West Pensacola Street, especially as they connect with Capital Circle Southwest Street, especially as they connect with Capital Circle Southwest and the State College and along Pensacola. I think that's, it's, it's, it's great that you're making those connections for our bicycling and pedestrian folks that use that very dangerous stretch of road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kent. We appreciate your comment. I do not see any additional participants who have raised their hands to provide a comment, so this concludes the virtual public comments. I'm going to hand it back to you, Taylor.
This concludes the public comment period. I would like to thank everyone for taking the time to share your comments concerning the State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, State Road 366 Pensacola Street in Leon County PDNE study. You may continue to submit your written comments after tonight's public hearing, but they must be postmarked or emailed by Friday, November 22, 2024, to become part of the official public hearing record. Written comments can be mailed or emailed to the FDOT project manager, Taylor Sellers, using the contact information shown on this slide and the handout you received tonight. You may also visit our project website at www.northwestfloridaroads.com/calender to further view documents and submit comments. The transcript of hearing, the hearing's all proceedings, together with all written material received as part of the hearing record and all studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing will be made as part of the project decision-making process and will be for public review upon request. Thank you for attending the public hearing and providing your input on this project. I hereby officially close the public hearing for State Road 20 Bluntstown Highway, State Road 366 Pensacola Street PDNE study in Leon County at 6:33. Have a good evening and please drive safely.